Good evening, everyone in the room with us here and online. This is our February 2024 monthly meeting of the Village Board. This is the meeting in which we hear from our departments and our standing boards and our municipal partners. So we're happy to have you here for that. And I would like to say thank you. We are premiering tonight our new updated village seal, which was designed by four village residents working together. Alex Wilcox Cheek, Charmaine Choi, Brett Lagerman, and Eleonora Zorzi. And it now graces our letterhead and it's beautiful. So thank you, Alex is here with us tonight. And look at Larry Burke, my goodness. Hello. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
May I have a polling?
Yeah.
Trustee Starbuck.
Here.
Trustee Bozey.
Yeah.
Trustee Frymart.
Here.
And trustee Wartus Absonnus.
Or Alan Tweaks. Okay, next is an opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items, any changes? Okay. And announcements, I have a few. Um, so to keep pedestrians safe in the village, the property owners are responsible for the removal of snow and ice on all the sidewalks that are joined their property. This is especially important if you have a corner property or if you have a block through property that fronts on two different streets. Um, you need to do both sides or all sides. Um, local law 10822 requires a three foot width sidewalk be cleared of snow and ice within 18 hours after the end of the snowfall. And if you could please, for the sake of our hard way guys, do the best you can to throw the snow um, or deposit it some way either in the tree lawn or in the yard so that it's not going back out into the street. Um, starting February 20th, which is next Tuesday, two village streets will be one way. Locust Ridge will be one way southbound from Mountain to Main. And Railroad will be one way eastbound from Depot Square to Stone Street. This is us implementing local law revisions reviewed in public hearing in October and adopted in November. Um, resident parking permits continue to be on sale. I think Kelly, you tallied 102, 104, having been sold through today, they're available at the village office. Um, cash or check, um, and there's information available on our website. Any other announcements? New Jeff? Okay. Moving on, reports from village departments. Michelle Ascolillo, the village accountant is here with us remotely and she's getting her report. Picking off our favorite time of year, budget time.
Uh, good evening, all. Um, yes, the main topic of tonight is to just go over um, a tentative budget schedule. Uh, so right now, um, starting over the next week or two, I'll be working with departments to get a draft of their budget going. Um, then the end of February, the last week, myself, a trustee and the department head will meet together to firm up their department requests. Then we go into um, a full board budget um, discussion on March 6th, which be high level, broad topics, but big ones. We'll talk about the tax levy, large purchases, projects, salaries, fleet, um, things that we want to accomplish in the budget. Um, and probably not make too many decisions, but at least we'll know all the moving parts that need to go into the budget. And then on March 13th, we'll have um, a draft of the preliminary general fund to go over. Uh, we can go over line by line, department by department, could you question and answers? The meeting is really driven by um, the worksheets obviously, but how the trustees want to present it and what they're looking for from the numbers. Um, I'm welcome to change things up from how we've done it in the past or keep it going. Um, usually we do almost line by line. Um, we roll up some of the departments and then I always encourage questions. Uh, so as trustees come up with questions, even if it's before the meeting during the week, you know, jot them down, send me an email. And then we can discuss the answers um, in the public session. But this way we can address everybody, two o'clock on a Tuesday, hey, this is what I'm thinking about. Send it and then we'll bring it to the meeting on Wednesdays. Um, the week after that um, would be March 20th and March 20th is when a balanced budget has to be um, formulated. That's a state deadline and that would also be the day that we can continue budget and work mostly on water and sewer. And probably touch on some general fund stuff that rolls over. Uh, if we need another session on the 27th and then we're aiming for a public hearing on April 10th. Um, and then pending the results of the public hearing, adoption, April 24th. We take that May 1st deadline and the March 20th deadline and work between them. Um, those are the only two deadlines we can't change. Um, budget season comes in fast and it comes in hard. Here we are. Um, so if anybody has any questions, just let me know. Um, I'm best um, accessible via email and we'll try and get this done like we always do as best we can. Um, in the Wednesday sessions, on occasion, we've added a session earlier before Wednesday or during the day if, if we need to roll things over to keep it going.
I'm definitely open to doing that again if we need to um, to keep Michelle moving forward. Um, we'll see how it goes. Um, I did um, prepare and we'll be handing out tomorrow at department heads meeting, Michelle, um, performance appraisals. Um, and I'm asking folks to conduct their performance appraisals by the first and then have their sessions with me by the sixth. So we'll see how that schedule rolls out tomorrow. Any other comments or questions for Michelle?
No. Thank you, Michelle, for giving us such a detailed sort of rollout schedule. This makes it pretty clear.
Yeah. I found it the process last year. And I would encourage you publicly to, to please listen in. Um, you know, when there are questions throughout the year about why is it taking so long to do something or why haven't we done this yet? It's really important to get a sense of just how really thin our margins are um, in the budget and how we um, really work to stay um, within, within our budget and within the cap.
Um, I would like to make one other comment, although there's no formal financial statements attached to this report. Um, just to piggyback on uh, last report, I did, I always take a look at the revenues and expenses and we're pretty much in the same spot. Um, slightly over in expenses, but we are starting to close that gap. Um, there's going to be a couple um, savings I anticipate in health insurance. Um, so if, you know, we just keep moving forward and stay on budget, I think we'll end the year, you know, in an okay spot. I'm just wanting to give a quick update on that.
Thank you. Okay, roadways and facilities, do we have Bugsy? You're not right, we don't have Bugsy. Okay, so um, we do have with us this evening, uh, a member of our team. Um, Jeff Phillips is with us this evening for the fire company, so we will look to him soon. Um, the, the crew spent the month of January dealing primarily with flooding at the waterfront and on Cedar Street. Um, and five snow event, events that were of plowable depth. And 10 days where the streets needed to be salted. Um, and I will say that until we brought on Jeff as another member, we were low, we were down a person. Um, so Bugsy accomplished a lot with very few resources through the month of January and we're grateful um, to him and his crew for getting us through that time. Um, all of the reports are available on the village website. We don't read them line by line or we'd be here for quite some time before I needed tears. But if you want the detail, if you're itching for the detail, they're all available online.
Yeah, and I said the, the snow event this week was, was pretty intense. And I think, you know, it wasn't clear even up until just before it happened, whether it would be one inch or 12 inches or something. So, so my thanks to the crew for, for being able to get out there and force and, and, and I think I saw some mutual assistance from Phillips Town as well and some other truck.
Um, not lower, not, not salting or plowing this time, but it's, it's still under four. They go quick. Um, and you will also see county trucks passing over our roads. The county has its salt shed here. That's one of the ways that the village saves um, is that we get salt for free for the county having their um, salt stored at our, at our highway facility. It's not insignificant. The night that we, when we did not have enough bodies in the village and Phillips Town did cover for us, it was $450 in salt um, for the night. So it's not, it's not a small um, thing. So we're grateful to the county. Okay, do we have Matt? Um, I'd say a couple of things to pull out from our water and wastewater report. Um, we are at 98.9% capacity at the reservoir, so that's a good thing. Um, and just a note that minco seals were installed at the end of January on West Street and Lower Main Street at the manholes. Um, to prevent infiltration and intrusion from storm waters and tidal flooding into the collection system. So to keep, keep storm water out of the wastewater system as much as possible. Because storm water that adds into wastewater gets pumped through the treatment plant um, and can overwhelm the treatment plant. So that's an effort to try to keep those waters out of the sanitary sewer down there. Um, public enforcement, you want to put that one, Jeff?
Yeah, well, typically quiet um, that time of year, you do fewer applications. Uh, we did receive 13 applications, Greg issued seven permits. Overall, five referrals of the HDRB went to zoning. Uh, the fees are down a little bit, there was $1,600.
I was thinking that the number of referrals was an uptick over last month.
Referrals, well, referrals is, but everything overall is, that was playing catch up going on.
Sure, people getting ready for spring projects, so. Okay, thank you. Um, police department, officer in charge Burke is with us.
Good evening, everybody. Um, we had a, not want to say typical, but we had about an average call of service in, in January. We had 53 calls of service. We had a little bit of an uptick on, uh, officers needs assistance with a couple of calls at train stations and uh, mental illness. Um, individuals like along the train that had to be removed. So we actually backed up the MTA on that and they did a great job on that. And we've had a couple of calls up in Nelsonville that we had to back the sheriff on because it was extremely busy uh, month for them on, on a few, few of the days, actually even when I worked. So um, that's all I have with just some of the highlights of the calls. We had one arrest for a unlicensed operator who did not pay his fines. So a court put out a uh, a um, not a warrant, but a suspended license. So he was picked up on a traffic stop. Uh, one of the officers had grabbed him coming into the village. Uh, that was the one arrest we had for the month. We had 21 moving violations, 39 parking summoners, a total of 64 in the month.
Um, I noticed um, the number of speeding tickets. You've been really patrolling steadily around.
School zone, uh, particularly during the morning and the afternoon hours when Carol's out there and just before she leaves, we, uh, I have the officer standing, sitting up there to make sure to put the ceiling down. Um, and that's why there's a uptick in speeding and I continue to do that. Uh, there's a couple of, uh, one complaint specifically on Route 9D, right where Tommy crosses, uh, the, the kids there. So we've been having officers try to be there in the morning when, when uh, Thomas crossing the, the children in the morning. Haven't had too many complaints in the afternoon, but the morning we have in the red and the, my attention. So I've been letting, telling the officers as long as they're not on a job to go and sit up there, leave the lights on so pedestrian, so trying to slow down as Tommy's crossing. Because Tommy stands out there or Carol stands after, all they have is a small stop sign. People are running late for work, they're doing whatever, it's still, still kind of dark out at certain times of the day, depending on the weather and, you know. Just I worry for their safety too, along with, along with the, the children.
Thank you.
Yep, a few quick things, um, CAD system is still rolling along, has a couple of uh, burps, I would say in the system that have to re, re, they had to redo. So we're still learning, we're still working on that. So that's for us, that's probably not going to be, you know, fully running completely, just relying on that for a couple of months now. I have them doing both the old system and new system so the officers can learn. Because again, you, you do two or three jobs on the new CAD system, you may not work two more weeks and then, you know, try to learn it all over again. But we have scheduled some training, mixed training coming up to get them up to speed with everything. If there's any complaints, Officer Jackson's been great, uh, he has taken the CAD system and the training uh, by the horns and he's been teaching all those, including myself. Uh, with his, with his expertise and self-confidence and can even go with that. Sheriff's Office has been excellent and have always reached out to me, basically anything I need for training, they'll, they'll be, they'll help us out. Uh, the radio system, on the other hand, we're still waiting on that tower to be built somewhere on this, on the west side, wherever they're going to put, I don't know. We have brand new radios and I can hear the screeching from the radio from here. Uh, even when I'm working, you cannot hear, you can't, you cannot transmit on certain days, especially when the weather's now pretty crappy. So we have to rely on a phone or we rely on the, the radio in the car.
Has something shifted about, so the, the plan was to install it at the highway department garage, has something shifted?
Uh, it's been going on for so long, I, I'm sure it's probably still there. It's, I, hopefully it is. Um, I'm waiting to hear a definite answer in this, they're going to start to build, which uh, probably still will not be till, I would think, just my, my, you know, my humble opinion. Then it's not going to be up and ready to go probably till summer, maybe fall.
Okay, and just for, for clarity, the record, this, that's a, a contract that the county enters?
Yes.
With um, OSI, um, has the easement on the property and with the town, it's not anything the village is part of, but it's something the village will benefit from in terms of um, public safety, so.
Are we paying fees for, for use of the network that's not operational?
No.
No. Okay, no, and then we had the grant money for the brand new radios that they, that they purchased for all of, some for the FD, most of the PD. Uh, the radios are phenomenal, we just, it's just trying to get that signal over here. Especially when like I said, when you have rain or you have, you, you have more static than you have anything else.
It's super frustrating, it's kind of like a 10 year process at this point. Um, and so that, we have a lot, a lot of members of the public who aren't with us frequently. So just so you know, the CAD system is computer aided dispatch. Um, we have an intermunicipal agreement with the sheriff's department to upgrade the dispatch system for our officers. Um, so that they have with them on screen, the location where they're going, what responding officers are nearby. Um, it also allows us to, will allow us to um, have much more detailed reporting capacity, which we have Victor Burros with us tonight, who is the chair of the um, ad hoc committee on community policing. And that was one of the things that they asked for was expanded reporting and CAD gives us that possibility. So it's on the way. Um, great, fire company, have you filled with us?
Uh, I guess, I'm sorry, Jeff, the one quick thing, you know, there will be a trial period on the, on the one way streets. I know the signs are going to be ending up for Locust Ridge and um, Railroad. I mean, if, within reason, there'll be warnings especially for the residents. We're not out there looking to hammer anybody. It's a new thing that's just changed, those streets have been that way for, I couldn't tell you how long. So just let everybody know, we're not out there running around doing tickets for that, there'll be a grace period.
Okay, thanks for that. And also I did, I got a call from the Falcon today.
Yes.
From T Beck just confirming the configuration of the streets and um, so they have the flyer now too. Okay, now to our chief, Chief Phillips.
Nothing too crazy, 19 calls for January. Um, one struck a fire in Colesboro, one in Garrison, one in Continental Village. Pretty much it. If you have a fire hydrant like around your house or your business, if you could shovel it out, that'd be great. You've been buried, it doesn't really do us any good.
Better reminder, shovel your, shovel your, it's always got, and he says not a big deal, but this, this gentleman and um, the chief of the Continental Village Fire Department saved um, two human lives and seven canine lives in that fire in Continental Village. Um, and risked their own lives to do it. So we appreciate your humility um, and we're grateful for you. And we did have a, uh, legislator Montgomery did have a ceremony at the county legislature's meeting last week for um, Chief, Chief Bodie and Chief Phillips. Okay, justice court, uh, 26 defendants, 29 charges for the last month. Um, uh, income of $5,894. Reports from standing boards and committees, do we have anyone from HDRB? Okay, um, your chair has submitted a report. Um, work a day stuff. Um, new signage coming in, coming at Butterfield, the new building at Butterfield, building one. Um, this is a hair salon opening there and we're reviewing signage for that. Um, nothing out of the ordinary. Um, who is that? Planning board. We do not have the planning board with us, but um, I just wanted to, Jeff's, Jeff's report is very brief. And it's his first planning board report, so I wanted to read it out for the, for the record. Um, planning board met one time in January on the 25th and the only open business before the board was 133 to 135 Main Street. That application is working toward completion. And other business, I'd like to specifically thank the village board and the mayor for timely appointment of additional board members to reach our full strength. And their full support in providing formal training for those board members. Planning board looks forward to productive year and service of the village. This is across, we have Chair Eric Worth of ZBA. Um, we need a, we need a member for you, still looking, uh, and we need the schedules and training for you. Um, in your report, you requested a shift from Thursdays to Tuesdays.
Yeah, I, I conveyed the um, unanimous preference of the current board members to make that shift. They just felt that um, too often um, meeting dates on Thursday nights conflict with weekend plans. And it'd be more convenient for them to meet on Tuesdays.
And I think Jeff, you had a look at the calendar and that works alternating with HDRB instead of planning board, so you're good. Um, what is the process for shifting?
Except the, the calendar.
I'll, I'll notify the members.
Anything else from ZBA? Thank you. Uh, to advisory board. Jen, um, dormant season work, um, is in process. Um, and we're able to do more than we thought we could um, because of the Cold Spring Colony Grant, so that's good news. Um, and she wanted to extend thanks to um, Bugsy and the Roadways and Facilities crew for responding to a hazardous hanging branch near Northern Avenue and Garden Street and for making, I mean, it's mitigating a laugh, whatever, that was coming, coming down. But it was indeed a hazard that needs to go.
Just back up to the zoning board for one second, I could just make that effect of March 1st.
Sure. Okay. Um, rec commission, I'm not sure how to handle this. I just had an exchange with the chair and I kind of need to ask a question of the clerk. Um, do we still have Michelle with us? No. Okay, so um, the rec commission, Michelle had identified a number of grants that might be helpful to the rec commission for expanding facilities at Mayor's Park, you know, um, all purpose field, pickle, pickle, ball, striping, et cetera. Um, accessible benches. Um, they determined that they would like to apply for a grant from the AARP. They're working on a budget. Um, he thinks it will be between $5,000 and $6,000 and it is a matching grant. So the village would, we would need to budget a portion of that. Um, at this stage without budget, I guess what I'm asking, or what, what the rec, what I'm asking on behalf of the rec commission is the board's um, willingness to have them go ahead and make an application and see how we go, how it goes, knowing that we will have to match. Yes. Yes. It would come from our um, the general, the general fund, what, where we have, which is different than offering a bunch of, where we have, where we're just making a, the.
Um, I, I notice a lack of numbers in the court.
Because they're still, they're still putting their budgets together. Um, what he said in his email this afternoon was $45,000, but you don't know any more than that. Either, right?
Do we know if it's, it's this budget year or next budget year?
I am unclear on all of it. It was a very late communication later in the day. So my, I guess where I feel more comfortable leading this is you're making you aware that they're, they are working on an application and we'll have details from them next week. They're meeting tomorrow night to hammer some things out. Um, and the deadline is on, in the next week. No, not immediate. And, you know, we did work through our going forward. Come in and let us know you want to apply, we look at it and then, so we'll get there. But it's money coming in that will be helpful to, to Mayor's Park, so that's great.
And, and likewise for the, funds course for the dog park, do, do you know how much?
No, not yet.
Are, or what the fundraising goals are?
Not yet, we need some, we need some more information from.
Okay.
Rec. But I will say the good thing to come out of rec is that they are, they are beginning to meet with stakeholders from across the village for Community Day. Yay, villagers taking it on. Um, they're working, where they're bringing together um, folks who've done a, different events in the village and trying to see how to, if they can pool resources and talents for a, for an all in one event. I mean, working with Tara Flagler and um, Angela, who's, I'm blanking on her, Jodzie. Um, who've done community events in the past and tried to consolidate it into one great, big, fantastic community day. So I'm glad they're taking that on.
And I want to say I'm being a little critical and, but there's a lot of stuff that happened during a month where I mostly stayed indoors.
Um, this is actually, there's a lot of stuff in this report that is repeated. Um, I've, I've asked Jeff to try to keep current with the report, but it, that doesn't always happen. So a lot of that stuff that happened some time ago.
I appreciate the volunteer effort.
Absolutely.
That help us do our job of oversight, so.
Absolutely. Um, municipal partners, do you not have, oh my gosh, we don't have Bob from Phillips Town. Okay, um, let's see if we can pull out. So again, all of these are available online um, in detail, but of note, um, let's see. Um, the town has been working, uh, they've appointed Max Garfinkel. Garfinkel is the wetlands inspector and natural resource officer. Laura and I are meeting with him um, on the 21st on stormwater management session, seeing where we can um, work together to optimize resources. Um, highway department spots some new trucks. Um, they have passed resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign a fire protection agreement with the village of Cold Spring for 2024.
Still concerned?
Not yet.
Nope.
That happens.
We have not received the, that'll come before. You. Oh, boy.
They look at it, then we get it. So, go ahead. Number nine is about the personal landing water district, is, um, is our team still doing testing there? They are. Um, the town has found a contractor for the weekdays. Um, and they're working, as far as I know at this point, they're working on contracts with them for the weekdays. They still had a need for the weekends. Um, we'll have to figure out how that, how that gets worked out. Um, but for now, we're in place. I'm not doing a task for an update. See, I mean, it's a lot. It's a lot, especially if it's leaving the weekends as the time, but. Yeah, so again, for folks who haven't, haven't, um, who don't always make it, it's a the, the town is helping us, we're trying to help them where they can. Um, we've had a lot of highway mutual aid, um, and they have needed water testing at the Garrison Landing Water District. So our team, which is very small, has been filling that gap um, until the town has its own contractor. And being paid for it. And, and being paid, yes. So, as, as we pay for highway service, when their crew does work for us. Oh, ask for an update, I didn't think to ask for an update before, sorry about that. Okay, um, what just said, Montgomery, I think is in session, I don't have a report compared, you have anything? So, one thing I, I will say, um, the the county's highway department is purchasing a new tractor truck. Those are the big things that suck out the, the catch basins and draw up leaves, et cetera. They're, as far as I'm aware from the commissioner, they are keeping the second truck. So there will be two available. Um, and the commissioner was very willing to um, offer help to us, for us to have the county come and, and assist us. Right now, we spend about $5,000 to $7,000 a shot when we rent um, a tractor truck. So this would be another path to mutual aid. So hopefully we'll know more about that as it goes forward. Okay, uh, report of the trustees, anyone have anything they'd like to throw out? That you won't, that we won't cover in another. I, I'm, you have. Other than that, I'll talk about some, some other concerns in a bit, but um, just to say, we're really spending a bunch of time also looking at um, grant opportunities for addressing our flooding and um, issues uh, in partnership with Nelsonville and Phillips Town. Um, we just got a call with um, two state agencies to learn about grant opportunities this afternoon. And um, so we're really trying to align toward um, some applications starting this summer, a lot of the due dates are in the summer. So I'm hope to have more um, to share on that, on that soon, we recognize um, that it's really important and expensive. Yes, so currently we are working on a um, technical assistance grant. Um, that would allow us, we, we need to do a, a stormwater study, an overall stormwater study to understand how, how, where, that we're addressing, are we starting in the right place addressing the issue and how far back do we need to go? Um, up the mountain, to address what comes down to bottom. So the first, um, the first piece is, is that stormwater management study and this technical assistance will be very helpful. And maybe I'll say too, so what we learned today is that there are a couple of grants from Department of Environmental Conservation, um, that are planning grants for that kind of, these kinds of storm and, um, stream studies. Uh, and so far, they've funded all of the projects that have been applied for in past years, so that sounds really promising. Um, we have to figure out eligibility of our streams. So I think.
So I think we have, we have some work to do to figure it out, but I feel like there's hopefully a pathway for us working with Miltonville for some planning grants to be funded. And, and the town, yeah. Cool, so we'll see. Thank you for the, all that you're putting in on.
Yeah, it's a lot now.
Yeah, well.
Sure thing, yeah.
I sound really rich, but you know, a lot of, a lot of what the board does sometimes doesn't necessarily feel like it affects everybody, but over the last couple of months, there's been a lot of changes, especially you know, with upcoming changes to parking and with one way streets and things like that. We have been trying to communicate well with everybody, with ads in the paper and the public forum and posting on social media. I'd like to know how we're doing. So if anybody has feedback and tell us, especially if we're doing a good job, please tell us. And, you know, just, just send an email to Village Hall or, or stop by and let us know. We want to be able to communicate well with everybody and so that's important, that everybody understands what we're doing. And that we communicate in a way that's well understood, so.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And just to sort of continue in the parking theme, just if you didn't catch last week's meeting, we are full on selling permits. This is the month to do it. Permits start March first. You might see the signs showing up on your street. They don't turn on, they will not be enforced by our officers until March first, but when March first happens, we are going to start some form of enforcement, whether people get warnings or tickets. Depends on how many times you park on the, on the street without a permit. But we're rolling that forward and then in April, we hope to have meters starting on Main Street. So we're moving forward, we're doing it in stages, we're trying to make it slow enough for everyone to get on board. And we really hope that everyone cooperates and does their best to sort of follow the rules and, and make it work because it's going to take everyone's support to make this thing work. And we all have something to gain and benefit from it if it does succeed, so.
Great, thanks. I mentioned performance appraisals. I mean, most of our time has been sent on storm, storm repairs and resiliency planning, grant, taking grants. Laura and I did meet with the County Commissioner of Planning. She came here, Barbara Barosa, to see where we can also work with that team toward grants. And as I mentioned, we've had ongoing support from the T B W Commissioner, Tom Berry. I would say if that hasn't always been the case and, and we're quite grateful for the staff level support and engagement from the county. It would be wonderful if the legislators for, legislators for districts two through nine showed the same collegiality and mutual aid to our legislator Nancy Montgomery as the county staff so generously and increasingly is showing to us in the municipalities. Jeff and I need to spend some time on calendar to plan legislative work around the busy budget cycle. We have a number of outstanding items that we need to wrap up, including short term rental law revision and adopting the local legislation for occupancy tax. So I'll sort of sketch out a calendar and see what that looks like. Moving on to board business. We have a request to purchase property at the rear of one oh seven to one oh nine Main Street, which is owned by Mr. McCormish. If you want to come on up, we have, we have in front of you us, portions of your the, the call out that you did on the survey, and the survey itself. My question, you, you had spoken with Jeff about whether there are any easements on that parcel. Have you done a title search? Do you have the results of the title search that show?
I can bring, I can bring in the, the deed, which shows all the easements if there are any.
Yeah, that would be helpful, just, just because it's been a contested spot. In the past, we want to make sure that we have all of the, all of the paperwork in order, so it'd be useful to have the, that title search.
A current survey with the meets and bounds, if we get the green light, it won't spend the money.
Right, right. So can you talk us through, talk the rest of the board through what you're thinking about that spot?
Looking at it, there's a little strip of sidewalk, kind of a little strip of grass. And it's approximately seven feet by twenty feet. So about a hundred and forty feet, since it's not perfectly rectangular, it's maybe a little more. But again, there's a new survey and the meets and bounds would show it and describe it accurately.
And do you own the parcels that it, about?
I'm not sure what we're looking at.
Tell me that right there. If you flip the page to the more detailed.
Okay. No, just the one you. Oh, you didn't give me the color one.
No.
There's one.
That's a copy.
So the grass and green. And the sidewalk. And the property extend going towards the top of the page.
And what property do you, yeah, what property do you own?
No, but yours is the parcel that says now or formerly Rock Spring or the?
Rock Spring, yes.
That's your parcel, the long.
It fronts on Main Street or on? Through the rocks. Used to be Saint Mary's Church, no time later.
So the, that's right, I saw that on the, that was on Main Street.
Yes.
The time I saw that on the, one of the standboard maps.
You know, Judy Ann, come on.
So, so the property line for all of these parcels currently runs contiguous along Rock Street, parallel to Rock Street. What, what does, what does gaining that portion of the parcels?
Makes it more viable and gives a little bit of exit when someone parks a car there and can get out on that side of the car, the passenger.
But they can do that without.
Also, ability to get a little money and relieved of any liability if someone slips and falls on the sidewalk there.
I think that we, my preference would be to have this request as we did with two oh seven, four seven, two seventeen, two oh seven Main. Is have, will take a look. And then, yeah, to make sure that this is something that we, A, have rights to sell and B, if there is anything that we need to be concerned about in the sales, the parcel so close to the street.
Yeah, I guess I would, my, my hesitancy would be to sell the concrete walk, which like if anyone decided to park there, we don't own it anymore. So I would, you know, feel more comfortable owning, continuing to own the concrete walkway to make sure that it's a little bit touchier and under village control.
That's a concern that I have as well. And I'm trying, so I guess I'm trying to understand exactly where it's essentially the parking lane, but.
But there's a sidewalk there or no?
There's no sidewalk. You turn that image for.
Where is the sidewalk?
Is it? You're too far, you're too far east in that. Oh. Is it, which direction from the pink purple house?
That doesn't look like it.
It's right. Let's let him. The description or back?
Back.
Just rip.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Modern technology.
Pass that through you. Looks like gravelly patch, is it?
Oh. I, I'm, I'm proud of the red car. And so you want to purchase the sidewalk?
And a little tiny strip of grass. Probably belongs to a village.
Yeah, I just, I'd be worried that this, we would use the sidewalk. And, and what we really, as a village, what we wanted is to preserve and maintain walk basis. So I mean, I'm not opposed to selling a little bit of grass. But I think the sidewalk is something that would be important for the village to maintain as public property.
So I don't know what that, how much that leaves you in terms of grass, yeah.
You can do it. I can make two different surveys. If you get the green light outside, make two surveys and one will show this.
It sounds like there's consensus.
Show the grass in the sidewalk.
Aaron, do you have the concern about sidewalk too?
Uh, yes.
So it sounds like we have consensus about, about that, that the sidewalk we're not comfortable with. What's not clear to me from the drawing, I mean, I think, I think what, what we're seeing here, you're talking about this little spot right here, right?
Yep.
I still want to have I think we still want to just get advice on it before we sell it. It's just such a narrow, it's such a narrow street already.
Sidewalk and all of that, if we ever wanted to increase the sidewalk there, then we wouldn't have that ability longer.
Well, and it, it jumps, it jumps the property line quite differently from the surrounding parcels, although this one appears to have the front lawn appears to be on village property. Tell you what, we're going to have, we're going to have Will, we're going to have the village engineer look at it with us. And just to make sure that we're not making any decisions that would have impacts later. And over that, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. More.
Continue the top row for us there.
Yeah, that's great. The title search would help a lot too. Thank you very much. Oh yeah, have an offensive.
Okay, next is Laura. Great. All right, so the first item is to authorize the mayor to sign a certain agreement that we be charging stations in energy study. Talked about this a bunch of times, but this is just a contract with my startup for a grant that we received for, for those two items. And we already have an energy study scheduled since next week, two weeks. And the charging stations, once we vote to approve this, then I can bring the, and it's executed by my startup, then I can bring the the quotes to further review and approval, okay? So you.
I would like to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to authorize me to sign the lesser agreement.
Those are good.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Quote.
It is an E, they prefer an E signature, so I can even pull it up. Okay, and greenhouse gas inventory.
And the greenhouse gas inventory, so this is part of our participation in the Climate Smart Communities Program. We have a member of our, from the past force here, thank you Paul. And the Hudson Valley Regional Council provided really great technical assistance in creating a template for a community greenhouse gas inventory. And that's what we used to do this report. So it's an estimate based on census data and kind of generalized data about the climate emissions that are coming from our whole community, all of our residents and businesses altogether. It's, you know, it's generalized, so it's not super accurate, but I think it gives us enough information to then be able to learn and incorporate actions. Like top line is that transportation accounts for about half of all village emissions. So I, you know, request that we adopt it and then once it's adopted, we'll add it to web pages that I plan to create soon on the village website, so look and look at it. I think it's, you know, it's an interesting, interesting. And writing cold springs in a municipality in one spot, so I would like to propose that we adopt this with, with two clerical, with those clerical corrections. With any discussions?
Seven metric tons per ton.
All right, so we are below average, but you know, it's worth noting, we don't have industry. We'll benefit from, you know, there, there's things that aren't within our borders that we benefit from and they're not captured as part of this. On the other hand, I think that we're, you know, we're a walkable place. We use public transportation. We don't have huge houses. People are taking good action, so you know, I still think we deservably are below average in our emissions. So you are making a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the community greenhouse gas inventory.
All in favor?
All right.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, and I'll come back soon with the, the one for our government, in our government actions. The, the will be, once the editing label go up on the website. That's right, so it's on the, should be on the, on the now, and then I'll hopefully work with Aaron and Jeff on creating a webpage to post it. Awesome. Laura is moving us late years forward. Okay, approved boarding revised list of unpaid taxes department county. There was a cross a crossing in the mail of a payment and the authorization of the list. We were able to remove one of those. So Jeff was prepared to revise list assigned to the county, but they're maybe below that one property. Any discussion?
Nope.
I would make a motion to accept the revised, the two twelve, twenty twenty four revised unpaid taxes department county. All in favor?
I am.
Okay, off it goes. Okay, last, can we see that, once everyone clear it out? Discussion of conducting a survey, read pure trail, alternative routes. So Kior, Alaz and I meet with, have met with pure trail periodically, both as part of steering committee, when I can't go to steering committee, Alaz goes and we've had discussions about how we are capturing making sure that we are represented as a body of views around the village, village, so we've been talking about how we would capture that. Pure Trail has two upcoming sessions in which they are reporting out on their alternatives analysis for the routes. One is March twenty first, right? March eleventh, March eleventh and the other is April third. So we had talked, Alaz and I, about waiting until that information was available for the public to have the full this whole lot of information before them. And then creating pathways for villagers, and specifically villagers here to come to this board, um, give some feedback. So we initially talked about a survey, we do have Survey Monkey and have done surveys in the past. That is one option. Another option is holding a public feedback session. You had another, a, a third idea that I don't remember.
Um, I mean, my thinking was that the two should go together because I think that people being able to voice their opinions is important and should be documented by the village if we're representing everyone. And you know, we, we need to collect a consensus, so you know, public feedback via public comment is one way, but I think having a survey is a way to do it for people who may be not so vocal or who are less comfortable putting themselves out there in such a small community. So I think, you know, these data points, the, the data points for me that we need to, to inform us for the villagers' consensus as your representatives would be like how informed are, are residents? I know if your choice, Trail is trying to communicate out, but like, you know, there's a lot of fears, a lot of concerns, a lot of hopes. People have a lot of thoughts, but they aren't necessarily keeping current with the information that is continually, continuing to come out. So that would help me understand, you know, what our villagers are feeling and thinking and where they are with it. What percentage of our residents feel that they will benefit from the addition of a new park or that they won't benefit, you know, one way or the other. And why and how, you know, some people might use it, some people may find it, you know, it's going to be a problem for whatever reason, but I think that kind of information we need to gather and then you know, ultimately where do our residents feel the end of the trail should be at the southern end? So those are the kinds of things that I think, we don't have a consensus, you know, we have two thousand villagers and I think we have two thousand opinions. Honestly, from what I hear, when I talk to people, and I have my own opinion, but it isn't necessarily representative of everyone, so it would be really nice to gather some kind of consensus and having multiple routes for that would be useful.
I mean, I think the idea is not I, I want to make sure that we're clear that Fuhr Trail is surveying portions of the village now. Doing directed a survey of neighborhoods that are potentially on pathways, on alter, on one or another of the alternative being considered. So what we are talking about is not a competition with that survey, what we're talking about is, alright, they're they're gathering information so that when they present alternatives, they're including feedback from those neighborhoods, that's part of their process to get to the larger um public communication that they're going to do. What I'm hoping we can do is gather feedback for our our public record and our, our education as a board, um, to make sure that we're creating a space for villagers to be heard on the, on that whole of the course. So I'm not, I'm not looking tonight for, um, I'm looking for for broad consensus around, are we, did that sound good? And a, an approach of doing a public comment and a survey, I, I take Alaz's point that not everybody is, not that everybody likes to get up and speak in public, um, and some people might feel more comfortable having a survey to pay, um, we, we would have to someone would have to take ownership of drafting, and we need to review those questions with the body, um. And make sure that we were shaping the questions in ways that were fair. And gathering, information gathering.
So from my point of view, I don't, I, I, I think it's a really good idea to, to, it's a good tool for, for asking people and giving them a form of opportunity to express, um you know, how they feel, I mean, it's, it's certainly possible to do a bad survey, but it's also possible to do a good survey with a little bit more work and feedback. My, my worry is, is that the residents are gonna be surveyed to death, and that there's, we're sending surveys. Other organizations might send surveys, Fuhr Trail is sending surveys. And, and when there are multiple surveys, then the discussion ends up not being about what the findings of the survey is, but about biases in the survey, and that becomes not helpful. Right, I don't, I don't really look forward to a conversation, which I think might be inevitable about, well, I like this survey versus this survey better.
Are you concerned about um organizations beyond Fuhr Trail, like other advocacy organizations?
I mean, that's possible too, um, you know, and and it could be interesting to to work with a larger group of organizations, you know, I sort of maybe have rosy colored glasses on, but if we could at least work with Fuhr Trail, I don't know if we've been invited, but we could invite them to jointly work on a survey. So instead of additional spot surveys going out, and then worrying about those that was able to see what the survey was that are going to the residents of Fair Street in Lower Maine. You know, some of the questions are good, but I think the board might have different points of view on the questions. And perhaps by partnering with the Fuhr Trail, and maybe opening up to other organizations that want to partner as well, we could send out a signal, single survey to the residents that we want, collect questions like, do you live on Fair Street? So, so that would also accomplish the the spot survey partnership. And, and be able to have maybe a more trusted data collection that's useful for a larger group.
Well, I would say that, just in thinking about Fuhr Trails, they're already, there, there are surveys out, so that, that horse has left the stable. Um, in terms of ri- neighborhood specific questions, and that's been your plan. We have with us in the audience Rebecca Ramirez, who's the community relations, yes, community relations director, if I have your title correct.
Visitor relations.
Community visitor relations director. Um, so they've been on this path to do these neighborhood specific surveys for some time, and they're out in the field. But my concern is that we as a board have a sense of the whole village. And um feedback from all, from all of the villages, we're all, it's, it's a small place, we're all impacted, it's not just Fair Street and areas west of Maine, we're all going to be impacted by the trails.
Right.
Go ahead, Laura. Um, I think that we have a unique position as government. Um, and I think that that's important in the survey, and I think that if we um uh if we are partnering with other organizations, including learning ways of planning the activity, I think that really changes um, the um I think it changes the survey, and I think even if it is done in collaboration, I think that, that that, I, my preference is um is to do it um ourselves. Um, and to be really thinking about what are the questions that are important to guide us, and I really appreciate you know, that kind of perspective that you both have been talking about, um. Uh, and I would, and I think I would be open to the, the survey and the public engagement session, um. So, um, and I, you know, I, I get it of having kind of survey overload, but um uh, I think the villagers would like to, would like to see the village board ask for their input on this. And I think that that, I expect that that would carry me.
And just as a reminder, this is um before you were on the board, Aaron, but when, when the previous iteration of the board held the May eighth, was it only a year ago, the May eighth session um at, at Helbane? The three municipalities came together for that session and agreed that going forward, we would as bodies, collect um, feedback and response from our own constituents. Um, because the needs of Phillips Town aren't necessarily the same as the needs of the village, and the views are maybe different, so um certainly, I'm sure there are people in Nelsonville who would like to give feedback to their board, they should do that with their board, there are people in Phillips Town who should talk to the town board. Um, we, we are accountable particularly to, to villagers, um, to residents and business owners in the village, um, so uh.
Right, and, and just let me be clear, you know, us sending our own survey, I prefer over not sending any survey. But my understanding of the relationship with the Fuhr Trail is, the village of Cold Spring has no direct influence, um, you know, uh, control really over, over the Fuhr Trail. And so, um, if the organization, if the, the state and the um HHFT want to reject our findings, they can. And so by partnering with them on something like a survey, I'm hoping they have a little skin in the game. And we're working together, and there's more interest and listening to what the results are. So we can certainly do it our own. And again, that would be preferable to not doing anything, and I have no idea whether Fuhr Trail would be interested in partnering with us on this either. Um.
I think we also have to be mindful. And, but this is not, this is not a contentious, but it's not about combat, it's not about the village versus Fuhr Trail. Um, for me, it's about making sure we have feedback from our constituents, good night, Claire.
Okay.
Okay, um. But also, uh, sorry, I lost my train of thought.
It's important to you that.
Oh, I think, I think that Laura, Laura has hinted at this, but I think um, trust is important, um, and I think that there would be a, a trust deficit. Um, where the village not asking for feedback directly from our constituents at the board level.
But, and, and I think, you know, it's not gonna be perfect.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I'm happy to take on putting together a survey, but I need the board's help.
Yeah.
Editing it and making sure that it's as neutral and unbiased as possible. Um, and I think that no matter what we do, there will be people who are not happy with it.
Yeah.
Um, every time. As we found it, but um I think that it still needs to be done, and, and from my experience with, you know, my engagement and um meetings with HHFT is that they do listen to us. And they do respect our villagers' input, and they have been collecting data and information in all of their sessions, and everyone who shows up is heard and recorded, and they have, you know, adjusted and tweaked and, and included all of that in their planning, and every time that I have met with them and, and the mayor has met with them, they have um given me no reason to believe that if we came to them with a consensus feedback that was clear, which I don't know that we'll get, but if we could get to that.
Or closer to.
Closer to that, that was representative of our villagers' point of view. I believe that they would take it seriously. Um, and we're a governing body, and it's important, like what we, you know, especially when we do the work, you know, it'd be one thing if I was like, well, this is my opinion, this is what I think we should do. But I think that when we do the work and ask the villagers for their feedback and do it in a sincere way um, with multiple avenues, I, I think that we can achieve our goals. And I would hope that everyone would treat it respectfully and give it their best to do so.
Um. Yes, and um, I, I, I don't think we'll get a consensus, which as you said, I think we're gonna see the range, but I think it would give like some texture and, and kind of data behind these different pieces, and I, but I don't think that we should look at the survey as, well, then that dictates the position of every member of the board. You know, and that's not why we're using it, we're using it to inform the board and, um, and inform discussions, and it will be, you know, and it's important for that, but I just want to make the like distinction that it's not like that will be the, like, okay, fifty one percent said this, and then that is, and therefore it's the answer, you know, that is the answer. That's not how we're planning to use it.
That's where, unlike any public process, public comment is one
Yeah.
element that gets considered in decision making, it's a really important one, but it's not the only one. Um, it's a tool. Um, and Erin, to your point about what we, what we do and don't have um uh, not control, but uh authority over, um the state has a lot more than we have, you're right, they have superior sovereignty, and we have a state park within our boundaries, no question. But I think we have, we have, we do have the possibility, and I think there is the goodwill to work with the community for best outcomes, so we can advocate, we can advocate positions. We might not be, we might not be the people approving um the secret review and making the final sign offs, but we do have a place at the table in terms of having discussions that outcomes in the village, and that we are there in an informed way, it's really important. Right now, I feel like, you know, we had, we had one big session, it was early in the game. A lot has shifted since then, and we're all going to learn a lot in these two alternative study presentations, um. And we're going to need to digest it, and I see this as a way to try to digest it in some workable, like, alright, here are the gems that came out of this conversation, and here's what the public is saying to us.
And I think at the end of the day, like, uh, nobody gets everything they want. Like, this is public process, this is democracy, like, some people will get a little bit and lose something, and it's, you know, like, whatever the outcome is, it's gonna be like, no one gets everything they asked for and everything they wanted, it's, it's always gonna be a compromise at the end of the the final product, and I think that's, like, we have to kind of accept that.
That's what I'm told, good negotiations, and everybody feels equally bad.
As Catherine would say, getting some big yes. Alright, so it sounds like we have consensus around the concept of a public session hosted by us for village um, residents and business owners after the April third, the second of the Fuhr Trail series, and after we give folks a little time to digest what they've learned, and we have the time to digest what we've learned. But um I mean, we can't wait until then to develop a survey, I think we need to start working sort of on the framework of a survey, and then be informed, yeah, and then be informed by what we learned as the other session, the Fuhr Trail session.
Yeah, in the meantime, like, we ask all villagers to sign up for the March eleventh session with Fuhr Trail, and make sure that you are informed so that when you do make your opinion known, it is one that has been given all the information it can, and it's an informed opinion. Because fearfulness or hopefulness is not gonna get us there.
Yeah, very, very good point. Okay, um. Good, so we have some direction, um, we have come to the end of our agenda, we do have a, a number of members of the public here, um would, is, would the board um like to open to public comment? Okay, uh, so I will make a motion to open the session to public comment. Um recognizing villagers first. Um.
Second.
And Nelsonville, Phillips Town after that. So second on that motion, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, would anyone like to make a comment?
He's gonna make a comment.
Go ahead, you can come on up.
I don't want to stand up, do I have to stand up?
Well, no, you don't have to. Uh, project, yeah, I will. Um, I, I thank you for Rebecca Ramirez, I live on thirteenth Church Street, and I am at the, um, I'm a resident here, but I'm also working for the Fuhr Trail, and um I just want to say thank you for having that conversation, and um you know, just want to share that we will, of course, take in to account the data that's collected, um, data is very important to me and to the staff. And um, and asking the questions, obviously, you know, I'm, I've been here for the past six months now, um, speaking to a lot of folks and um, learning a lot, and going into people's homes and hearing, you know, a lot, everything they have to say and share, so um I think, I think we, we will support this, and we do support so what you're doing, and we're happy that you are doing it. Um, I just wanted to make sure that people do know the sessions are both at Duchess Manor. Um, they are from six to eight P M. The first one is the alternative root analysis, so we'll take a look at all the routes that were explored. Um, and the shoreline design concept. Um, so the registration is open now, um, but space is limited, so we will have a waiting list uh, if it gets full, but don't wait. Uh, those that can't attend, we will have uh recording so that you can view it at a later point in time.
What's the limit on the road? Uh, two fifty is capacity? So it's, it's still.
It's big.
Yes.
Still big, yeah.
Rebecca, is it the same session twice, or is it two different content, and they're both, and they're both open now to sign up for?
Not only the first one is open. Um, the first one's already, if you go to HHFT dot org, and you go to the about the trail, resor- uh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm talking about the videos, if you go to HHFT dot org and you go to the events page, you'll see it there, and you can sign up there. Um, but if you, we will be sending communication to everyone who lives R C P'd and making sure that they have easy access to the videos that we're asking for people to view before they attend. Um, one of the things that I'm finding is that some people don't know a lot, and uh, we want to make sure that they have all the information that they need. So, those videos, um currently, there is one of the three videos that we'll, we'll be asking folks to watch on the alternative analysis. Um, and if you go to the HHFT dot org about the trail resource library, they will all be there in, on that page. Um, there's other videos there as well, but the ones that you should be watching are called alternative root analysis. And of course, the shoreline concept design. Uh, the Monday, April third event, uh, we're still shaping it, but it's managing uh park and trail bound visitors, that's the focus. The registration is not yet open, but um it will be soon, as soon as we uh I think probably after this March eleventh date. Uh, yeah, if anyone has any questions, I have my cards, if anybody wants to speak to us directly, though, we will still have our Sunday chats at the Hubbard Lodge on Sunday, February twenty fifth, from two to four.
Almost at the end of March.
Yeah, um, if you could, we have, we do have a Fuhr Trail section on the website, if you could press the link um, to that portion of their page. Maybe even, maybe even. Yeah, so the video.
We don't have Fuhr Trail. We don't have Fuhr Trail page.
We do have.
We have a section on the Board of Trustees page.
On the Board of Trustees page.
Fuhr Trail, yeah.
Sorry, that's what I meant, on the Board of Trustees, we have a tab for Fuhr Trail, and if we can update there, so people looking for information on the village website have access to the videos, if you could. Okay, um, did anyone else have? Hi.
Just like, really appreciate your conversation.
Thank you. Tell us your name and address.
Susan Peel, I live on thirteen, or twenty-three Fair Street now.
Still thing.
And um, I really appreciate your comments and hearing the discussion around. And, um, I really appreciate your comments and hearing the discussion around an upcoming survey. And I really think it's important that the village conducts its own survey. Because I was deeply offended by the survey that the Fjord Trail has recently put out. I was one of the targeted routes. And, um, really, there were only two required questions. I submitted a letter to Mayor Foley earlier today. And it was forwarded, I think, to all of you, but really, there were only two required questions. One was, where do you live? And the other one was, do you agree with the goal of the Fjord Trail? And so it left very little room as a, as a resident to say, well, yeah, I agree with the goal about safety. But I'm not in favor of this trail. I don't think it's gonna solve the problems. Nor did it talk about the environment or any way that you could express something beyond those two hard data points. And that would be recorded and we could be assured that it would be heard. So, um, I'm very, very pleased that the board has come to this conclusion with the survey. I also brought in some copies of the Fjord Trail survey so that you can look at it yourselves.
They do have sections for filling out your own comment.
Nothing is, nothing is required. There are two required pieces. That's it.
Right, but anything you put there, they will review.
They will review, but they also have tainted the entire questionnaire. And, and people other than myself have mentioned it through the, um. Our, our letter was posted at the Current's website today. And a couple other comments came afterwards. And one woman said, I felt like I was backed into a corner with my answers.
So let's just pause and say, these are concerns that you're raising that. We should direct, direct to the Fjord Trail, right?
In their survey, yes.
We'll try to do better.
Well, we will, we will work on doing, doing better. Uh, but that, that kind of feedback is not. Act upon, that, that's what the Fjord Trail can act.
However, um, I would encourage you to read the comments at the current, in the Current's website. Because it can inform you on building a better survey.
Yeah, I'm Paul Thompson. I'm homeowner on New Street, so I'm in the dockside area. Um, I did receive, uh, the same mailing, um, from Rebecca. And I responded to it online. I still have the hard copy with me. I don't share the same concerns, uh, perhaps not surprising me as, as Sue. Um, I think overall, it was quite a balanced, um, survey. I responded to it, accepted there were only two required questions, but there's over twenty questions in total. And there was plenty of opportunity to express your views, even if they were quite negative. My views were generally quite positive, um, perhaps not surprisingly to those of you that, uh, witness whatever I post on social media. Um, but I think the good thing is, I like Sue, what I do agree on, is I do feel it very important. That the village has its own survey. Um, you are trusted. You've been voted into office by the village. So you have, you know, I, I would say that Fjord Trail would struggle. Uh, to have the same degree of, of trust amongst the respondents. Um, you could obviously ask them, canvass their opinions on a draft survey. Maybe you could encourage them to promote distribution of this, of your own survey. Um, the only thing that I was a little bit sort of unclear about is whether you're gonna do the survey before then, perhaps you were to have a public meeting? Or whether you do it the other way around? Whether you would do a public meeting where people were able to learn and share? And then the survey went out subsequently. I, I was unclear which way around you wanted to work.
What I understood us to be talking about is follow-up to the two sessions that Fjord Trail is holding. But that is, right, so the, so the, the, the body putting forward the proposal is giving the information on the proposal, right? We are all listening to it and learning from it, and then coming back here to make comment on, on that presentation. Whether you've watched it online or been in person. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I think, I think Paul's just asking, do we do the event, our public, our public session and then put out a survey? Or do we put out a survey and then have a session? I don't think. It's, it's.
Sue of the notion that you take the lead on this. Um, the village residents stand to be the most impacted by the Fjord Trail. And like I say, you're a trusted, I, I think you have the trust of, of the residents of the village, which Fjord Trail can't necessarily count on.
Thank you very much.
This is literally in our backyard, so I think it really makes sense for us to get that feedback. Um, whether we do the public comment session first or, or at the same time, like, comes a public comment, there are surveys there. And we distribute them out. Um, I think we'll just have to figure out those details.
Yeah, I think we heard very clearly after that May eighth session that some folks didn't feel comfortable speaking in a crowd. Um, and so didn't, didn't have their view represented. And so I think we, we wanna, my hope is that we can create safe spaces, either getting up to speed or in writing.
Yes, send us emails even. I mean, all of those are valid reasons and ways to communicate to us that will be reported.
Any other public comment?
Uh, my name is Mike Galorn. I live at fifteen Orchard Street. Uh, in general, I support the Fjord Trail. Um, I also am very in favor of the village doing their own survey. Independent of any other organization, as you say, to get feedback from constituents. Um, one of the, I think to me, the track of things about the Fjord Trail is that it would hopefully provide a mechanism. To, uh, uh, fund infrastructure improvements in the village to deal with the problems that we already have, right? Tourism, visitation management, issues along the thoroughfares that people are currently traveling on to access the state parks. Um, what I'm curious about is if we take the Fjord Trail out of the equation. What is the village's plan to address these same issues? So if we say to the Fjord Trail, sorry, this needs to start further north, et cetera. Does the village have a plan and funding mechanisms?
They hold on to that and come back next week. Um, because among the things that we're working on right now is partnership with, um, NIMTEC, the New York Metropolitan Transit Consortium Commission. Um, and, and, um, and Rutgers University, looking at, um. Traffic, the intersections that we control and that are problematic. And how we as a village can regardless of Fjord Trail, approach those challenges. In terms of funding, you've heard us talking a lot about grants. Um, that's, that's, that's about what we have, um, is plans, uh, uh, sorry, plants, um, grants. So, um. I want folks to understand that the village isn't just sitting and waiting for an answer, right? We have undertaken resident parking, um, as a way to get some management of traffic on our own streets. We'll begin the process with NIMTEC next week for public conversations around particular intersections. Um, we are working on updating the short-term rental law and creating an occupancy tax. So we have a flow of income from overnight stays. So the village, the village is not passive. We're not doing nothing. Um, and it really isn't an either or. I think we're gonna ultimately have to do things ourselves anyway. To manage our own visitor flow. So, you know, an either or kind of creates a, an inevitable conclusion. That this is, that the Fjord Trail is the only thing that solves our problems. It's not going to be that way. Um, they're, they're gonna choose a route and build the trail, and we will benefit from that in some way. Um, but we have to be making our own decisions and taking our own responsibility for managing what the village can manage.
Is, is what you just said articulated in some way on the village website? Where you could point someone, a village resident, to it and say, this is what the village is doing. These are the five things as you just listed off to help manage this.
It is, but it could be, if that, we think that would be helpful.
I, I do feel that knowing that such a plan is in place.
Well, plan isn't a place.
Right, the vision for this process is in place, um, may influence the way people feel about the Fjord Trail. Um, and I, I think having that information out there in a way that can be easily digested and discussed, or at least visible. Ahead of this survey that you plan to do would be, I think, in, in everyone's best interest. Just in terms of getting the total overall information landscape as complete as it, it can be.
So I would ask you, please, come next week. Um, what happens with NIMTEC and Rutgers next, next week? Is that, that they make a presentation to the board about process. Um, and then undertake a direct process with the public and come back to us with results from that process. But next week will be a good introduction to ways that we can be proactive as a community to solve some of our own problems.
I think that there's a couple misconceptions. One is that, like, Fjord Trail's funding is like this nebulous thing. That can solve many problems. It's, it's a park funding. Um, we have infrastructure problems and having Fjord Trail's attention. Like the state focused in our backyard can help us get attention for grants. That will solve our, our infrastructure problems, but we have to solve them. The five people on this board and the three staff members in the office at our very miniscule highway department. We are strapped, our budget is tight, nobody wants their taxes to go up. And we are working really hard to find funds everywhere we can, whether it's through parking meters, which is why the parking meters need everyone's support. Um, whether it's through occupancy taxes for the S T Rs and hotels that are here. Um, whether it's through grants, through NYSARDA, all the things that our board members are doing to find funding. And, and come up with a plan. We've got engineers that we're funding. We're over budget because we've put a ton of money into engineers. Um, this year, so we're trying to put plans together, but it's kind of this like nebulous work in progress in a way. It doesn't have this like clear plan. It'd be really nice for everyone to like know exactly what we're thinking, but we are doing everything we can.
I think it's also to make, it's really important to make clear, and Rebecca, you can correct me if I misstate. But the Fjord Trail is not interested in rebuilding the village's infrastructure. Right, they're not interested in rebuilding our storm system, or they're not. I'm saying it sort of as a general comment, not just to you, but just so that everybody's aware, Fjord Trail is building a park. They're not rebuilding our infrastructure. So we might find ways to overlap and, you know, like maybe on Fair Street, we can find ways as we're recovering from the July storms. And as we're thinking about building resiliency on Fjord, on, excuse me, on Fair Street. And upsizing our water, stormwater management, et cetera. Maybe there are places where we can overlap. But we have to, we have to imagine, as the five fiduciaries, we have to imagine that Fjord Trail is not happening. And keep working toward solutions of our own. So, for example, right now, we are, we are working with FEMA toward recovery money from the July storm. Our engineers, there are five sites that qualify. Our engineers have to estimate two ways for FEMA. One is we replace it exactly as it was, which obviously wasn't sufficient. Or we upgrade for hazard mitigation. And we then take those two numbers and we get some money back from FEMA. And it helps us qualify for other state and federal money to do that upgrade. Um, and Eliza's right, that there is leverage to be gained from partnering where we can, um, with parks. Et cetera, and other state agencies. And in fact, you know, our, our, the biggest. Our stormwater problem starts way up in the Nelsonville Woods. And the land that the water comes rushing off of is state land. So two weeks ago, I met with Linda Cooper and with, um, Deputy Commissioner Davidson. To show them the math that our engineers have just made about with the topography and, and where water is going, what's shifted. These storms have completely shifted the way some streams move, and they've created new streamways, new paths that are problematic. So the conversation we had was, all right, we can't, we're not gonna be able to solve this by ourselves. We need water detention further back, the mountain. We need to slow the water coming down. And we need parks to be part of that. And they expressed very much, um, a willingness to partner with us to be part of these grant applications to do that work. And in fact, they have been part of other municipal projects with exactly the same thing. Two slopes, one of them a state, one of them state property and flooding in the bottom. So those are relationships that have to be built, um, which is another reason we have to be at the table. Cause it is, it is really, it is really about relationship building. We don't, nobody's just handing the village money.
Um, no, um, and I, and I would say this administration has done more simple those relationships in the short time that we've been doing that. Than, than I've seen in the time I've lived here. So it's, it's definitely building, we're putting, we're laying all the groundwork. We do see our sites, we need infrastructure taken care of. It is part of the plan. It will happen eventually. But it's gonna take a lot of time, cause everything moves very slowly and there's a lot of groundwork to be built.
Thank you for, for your answers. I would just end by saying, please, if anything you can do to articulate what you just said. In a way that is at least somewhat digestible to the average villager that we could point them to and say, this is, this is what the thinking is. Doesn't have to be a plan, but this is what the thinking is, I think would help move the conversation regarding Fjord Trail and its role. In the community in a direction that's beneficial for everybody.
Let me just see, there's any other residents first? Are we, somebody, go ahead, Rebecca.
I, I, I did the, the unmute move. I, I think, I think this is a great conversation. Uh, as far as the survey is concerned, absolutely. We need to have an independent survey done by the village. Um, very simple, straightforward, where you can easily collate the results. I would hesitate, uh, for transparency and integrity reasons to partner with anyone on the survey. Other than the village, because then the perception may be, well, uh, we're, we're in cahoots with someone else. So I, I would keep it very independent. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Um, and Rebecca, you had your hand up, and then I think we've.
I'll just keep, I'll keep it really short. I just wanted to share that, um, you know, the, the purpose of this survey. It took a lot of time to, to do this survey.
The one you have in the field right now?
Yeah, and it wasn't necessarily the purpose to find out, do, do you support? The Fjord Trail or not. That wasn't the sole purpose of the survey. I mean, for me, I started when I looked at twenty seventeen Dave Marantini survey. What worked about that survey? What didn't work about that survey? What were the outcomes from that survey? And there was, there was some outcomes. The biggest outcomes were what people shared in pen on their own. And, um, so I just wanted to say, you know, we didn't, we didn't require questions. Because we knew not everyone would want to answer certain things. So we wanted to create that flexibility, but, but I, I understand. But I, I do just wanna share that we, you know, we wanted to know, I wanted to know, you know. And I wanted to make sure that the leadership that each agency knows that really well. Like, how do you feel about what it looks like today on your street? I know from talking to everybody what they feel like, cause it's on their porch, in their backyard, on their side street, on their main street. Like, their, those peak times are felt like nothing that people can describe. It's just not a quality experience. Um, so, you know, we wanted to know about those challenges that, that are, that they are facing. Whatever that data tells us, that's what's going to like, that's going to help. Not necessarily even make decisions, but inform us differently so that it's. We can actually, um, acknowledge it and, and perhaps address some of it. You know, in different ways. So I just wanted to share that.
So what was the point of this survey?
So, so I just, I just shared, some of the, some of the different purposes were like finding out what those specific challenges are. Which of those challenges are they feeling? Is West of Lund Terrace residents feeling the same type? Obviously, they're not, because they're not getting, you know, all of the trail-bound visitors that are walking down Fair Street. But what are the different challenges that are experienced in those two different areas? I know, for instance, that the trail bound visitors that end up near dockside because the signage is three of the five signs are telling them to go to dockside. You know, that people are sitting not knowing where to go. So so but Fair Street's not experiencing that, but but the data will be able to flesh that out a little bit more. Um but also, we wanted to find out have people, do people read our website? Are they being informed? How informed are they? What can we do better to make it easier for them?
Just to be clear, this is, the surveys that you have in the field right now are particularly focused on the neighborhoods that are under consideration as pathways. Yeah, right. So it's not a whole village survey. You're looking particularly at west of Main Street and Fair Street and for the purpose of determining opinions on in those neighborhoods, right? Opinion is not a, I don't mean trail, no trail. I mean, the questions that you're asking. You're looking for their feedback on those questions.
Yeah, I mean, just to sort of clarify, this is the copy that I got from the post. Um I completed it online, though, so I didn't complete this one, Rebecca. Uh there are two required questions, just two, that you have to answer. In which area of Cold Spring Village do you live, Fair Street or West of Lund Terrace? And then your mailing address. The rest of it is optional. Where is the other one? Okay, maybe number nine. Yeah, it is required.
What is number?
Number nine is H S H A F T goal is to create a trail that is a safe way to connect all pedestrians, both local and nonlocal to the Hudson Highland State Park Reserve, Hudson River and Beacon. What is your level of support for this goal? And then a great deal of support all the way through to no support at all. And please feel free to share more thoughts. I actually quite like the survey. I thought it was pretty good. I mean, obviously, I'm very generally pro trail, but I didn't look at this and think I'm I'm being boxed in here. I have to be.
Let's just be clear. So our job isn't to judge how great the H H F T's surveys in the field are, right? What we're looking at is what direction are we going to take as a body going forward? That the feedback, specific feedback about the surveys need to go to H H F T. Last comment and then we're going to wrap it up because it's eight thirty.
So um Sue Peel again, um I just wanted to piggyback on two things. One was yours and that um Paul said, you know, which would come first, the um the public meeting or the survey from the village? And I would just like to express that I think the public meeting should come first, only in that as much information for the public before the survey is taken is the best. And then one other thing about the um.
But look, look, so hold on. So I just want to make one thing very clear. We're not talking about an event, an information event on the scale that was done on May eighth, right? Or not, the village is not going to be doing a presentation on pure trail.
No, I understand.
We are saying, go to these events, watch these videos, give us feedback. We're not going to be re-presenting information. It's a listening session.
I I would understand that, but I would think that villagers listening to other villagers increases their knowledge.
Potentially, sure. So um.
On that note, also, um what what Mike was saying about putting as much information on as possible up on the website about how the pure trail doesn't have any jurisdiction over traffic in the village. The pure trail has no jurisdiction over um our our lights or our how our how cars are rooted or parking or anything in the village. That's our responsibility. So as much as we can partner and hope for grants, I really think that um the misnomer is that we could gain a lot from having the southernmost end of this pure trail and in the village. And I think that we have a lot to lose as well. And so making that distinction between what their jurisdiction is and what the village's jurisdiction is is really important.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. I got it. Yeah, we knew what you meant. Absolutely.